All right, I'm gonna call this October 10th, 2023 Business Main to Order. Roll call, please.
Dr. Campley.
Here.
Mr. Dorr.
Here.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Here.
Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Dr. Culler.
Here.
Mrs. Mayers.
Here.
Mr. Saylor.
Here.
Ms. White.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as long as God.
The mission of the Perkyomen Valley School District is to cultivate an inclusive community of learners empowered to grow intellectually, socially, and emotionally. I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Say none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Looking for a motion to approve the... Hold on, here it comes. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes for September 11th, 2023, and October 2nd, 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Say none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Last week, we had a special presentation for full-day kindergarten, and we'll move on to our special recognition for tonight. Mrs. Mayers?
Tonight, we wanted to honor four of our students. In 2018, Governor Wolf signed into law Act 35 of 2018, which mandates that all school entities must administer a locally-developed assessment incorporating U.S. history, government, and civics. The four critical components encompass: Principles and documents of government; Rights and responsibilities; How Government Works; International relationships. The examination crafted by our Social Studies Department is conducted during the spring of students' eighth-grade year. Today, we take great pride in celebrating the achievements of four students who attained a perfect score on the test administered in the spring of 2023. So I'm gonna call your names, and if you could come up and receive your certificates from Dr. Russell. Thomas Hayward. Robert Ianiri. Brianna Minkin. And John Spurlock. Congratulations. We're gonna take a quick recess and go out there and take pictures. Thank you.
We'll start with comments on any topic. We'll start with Dr. Weston.
Good evening, Wade Weston, Collegeville Borough. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Last week, in violation of its own policies and procedures, this board voted to implement Policy 720, an unenforceable and discriminatory policy that serves only to alienate transgender and gender non-conforming students. The very next day, anti-trans signs and stickers were found posted around the district. As a direct result of this policy being passed, bullying of students has increased. Tonight, an amended version of the policy is on the agenda, not to correct the major issues with the policy, but to make some minor tweaks that you didn't think through before. So in the last several weeks, you've shown once again that you have no regard for board policies and procedures. You've encouraged bullying of a marginalized group of students, and you've attracted national attention to PV, and not in a good way. You're also exposing the district to lawsuits, but I guess you don't consider that to be an issue. From what I understand, your attitude is that's what insurance is for. It's no coincidence that so many of the issues we've been hearing about for the last few years seem to be popping up at the same time everywhere around the country. No one had ever heard of Critical Race Theory until schools everywhere were being accused of teaching it. Library books were never a problem until suddenly, all over the country, people were standing up at school board meetings, reading cherry-picked sections from book looks. And the efforts to further marginalize LGBTQ students aren't just happening in PV. They're happening all over, and at the same time that we are dealing with them. These things that we're spending so much time talking about and that are dividing our community, we aren't talking about them because they're PV problems. It's because of outside groups like Moms for Liberty and the 1776 Project that are pushing an agenda to undermine public education, and our school boards are buying into it. I think that's a shame, and I think it's frightening. Public schools, as I've said many times, are where the entire community comes together. School boards are responsible to the community and should be focused on the needs and the concerns of the community. I don't want my school board taking direction from outside groups that have neither connection nor interest in Perkyomen Valley, but are concerned only with their own agenda. I want our district's governments to remain local. If we ever lose that local control, it will be very difficult, if not impossible, to get it back. Please remember, school board, that your responsibility is to the PV community and the entire PV community, the marginalized, as well as the majority. Reject the influence of outsiders, remember where you come from, and remember who you serve. Thank you.
Jean Dandos?
Hi, Jean Dandos from Trout. I'm here today to address the behavior of some board members last week. First, Mr. Saylor, I was cautiously optimistic when you spoke to the crowd early in the meeting, asking them to be quiet and respectful, and saying you wouldn't tolerate BS. Unfortunately, that comment was apparently for the cameras, because you did nothing to manage them, not even when they harassed a student who was speaking, or when they yelled at Mrs. White. It's disappointing that you won't hold those who agree with you accountable to what you state is the required behavior. Mr. Keenan, your performance when you said you've been presenting as a woman for a year while growing a beard was disgraceful. When you mocked transgender folks as a grown man and a supposed Christian, you demonstrated very clearly exactly why folks don't suddenly decide to become a different gender, or why they may not want to come out as gay, because they know they will, at best, be teased and harassed, and at worst, become the victim of violence. Since you clearly demonstrated what LGBTQ folks endure, I'd also like to address the question of violence. Several very specific instances of violence committed by transgender folks were mentioned last week. While those are real examples, they are far and away the exception, not the rule. Transgender folks are four times more likely than cisgender people to experience violence. You disparaging transgender folks at a public meeting puts these kids further at risk. Don't you think your behavior sends a message that it's okay to make fun of queer folks and maybe to hurt them? If you would act like that in front of children who attend this school, how do you think these kids are being treated in the hallways, restrooms, and buses by their peers? Mr. Saylor expressed his belief that every person on the board truly wants what is best for the kids in this district. And as much as I disagree with some board members, I did believe that was true. After your shameful behavior last week, I no longer believe you truly care about all students. It's obviously you only care about those who conform with your beliefs. It seems that some cheers from the audience and a pat on the back is all you need to justify your abhorrent behavior and to put the children in this district in danger. If you were on a board of directors at a company, you would be dismissed for your shameful conduct.
Corey Hulse?
Corey Hulse, Perkyomen Township. First, I want to applaud administration for putting forward a proposal for full-day kindergarten. It will keep us competitive with other districts in the area. I hope that the board will vote to approve that, and that administration continues conversations to ensure a successful implementation. I also want to thank Dr. Russell for hosting various parent roundtable discussions. I recently found out about these. I read summaries from a recent one, and I appreciate the varied topics and the nuance in which those topics were approached, and I am glad that such a thing exists. But I'm also here tonight to speak out against Policy 720. I thought we'd be here talking about proposed Policy 720, but the current board majority decided to break tradition and voted in last week during a working session? In September, you introduced a policy blatantly copied from another district. You didn't even bother to change the policy number. You also ignored established procedure and put the issue to vote without going to policy committee. Then after the policy was voted against in September and subsequently moved to policy committee, the five of you chose to ignore the committee and administration's recommendations and bring it to a vote practically unchanged. Now, in October last week, the five of you once again ignored procedure and voted on it in last week's working session. The vote should be happening tonight, but instead, you have hammered it through without any sort of respect to due process. I find that to be shameful. Now, there are parents and members of the public here that are in support of this policy, and I want to let those groups know that, yeah, your concerns absolutely should be heard. And I think there are things that the residents of this district could all agree on. We want safe schools for our children, right? We want protection of our civil liberties, and we want fiscal responsibility for our tax-paying dollars. And Policy 720 does none of that. And the five of you are here dividing our district and deceiving your own supporters in the process. It's a policy that actually does nothing to address student safety concerns and exposes Perkyomen Valley and its taxpayers to potential lawsuits for civil rights violations. Mr. Saylor, last month, you said that policy committee is where things go to die. Mr. Saylor, I highly disagree. Policy committee is where bad ideas go to die. Good ideas are worked on and shaped and have input taken from administration, the community, students, taxpayers, to turn a good policy into a great policy. And the five of you must know in your heart that Policy 720 is a bad policy, which is why you have circumvented procedure. And let's call a spade a spade. You have imported an external wedge issue into our district for your own political gain in this upcoming election. There's no other excuse. And ultimately, the taxpayers of Perkyomen Valley are going to foot the bill because of the selfish actions of Mr. Saylor, Ms. Mayers, Mr. Dorr, Mr. Keenan, and Mr. Fountain. And to the five of you who are dividing our district, I implore you to stop undermining governance. Thank you.
Judy Lofton?
Judy Lofton from Quebec. The 1776 Project PAC is a national political super PAC aligned to far-right agendas that targets teaching truthfully about racism and has recently targeted the LGBT community. And their stated tactics are alarming. Social media posts from PAC founder Ryan James Gerduski have outlined the plan for remaking public education with a far-right ideology. According to Gerduski, quote, "We'll take over school boards, change curriculum, fire superintendents, file lawsuits against school administrators, cripple the teachers' unions," end quote. That's right. Although they are a national organization, the 1776 Project PAC is taking their extremist agenda to local school boards. Looking at their website today, it identifies about two dozen school boards across the country in which they are endorsing candidates. Two of those school board races are in Pennsylvania, and one of them is the Perkyomen Valley School District. 1776 Project PAC has endorsed Five for PV, the school board candidates led by Mr. Saylor. This group has proudly displayed the 1776 PAC endorsement on their Facebook page, and although they delete comments from community members who question their affiliation, they have sent out campaign mailers that show that they are being paid for by the 1776 Project PAC. Let's talk for a minute about dog whistles, like some of the ones that we see coming out of the 1776 Project PAC. Some members of the current board claim they want to protect girls. They're asking in the interest of safety by scapegoating students, doing nothing to actually address the safety issues that we have in our district. A few years ago, a student group called the Safe Collective was formed to help address discrimination and bullying in this district. This group conducted student surveys that revealed egregious, racist, homophobic, and sexist incidents happening throughout the district. And I know the district that the entire board has those surveys, because I've emailed them to you when you tried to undo the district's equity policy. But instead of taking this alarming information and working to address it, this board has taken steps to silence student voices and has sidelined the Safe Collective. Dismissing these behaviors in our district is doing nothing to actually support students or promote safety. Please, let's focus on the actual issues facing our district rather than being controlled by an outside extremist agenda. Thank you.
Kathy La Sage?
Good evening. I'm Kathy La Sage, Quebec Township. I am a parent of a 10th grader here at the high school and a 2023 PV graduate. I want to talk a little bit tonight about Vermillion Education and its connection to Pennsylvania school districts, including Pen Ridge and possibly Perkyomen Valley. Vermillion was founded in December 2022, so less than a year ago, by Jordan Adams, a 2013 graduate from one of the most conservative Christian colleges in the country, Hillsdale College in Michigan. Adams does not hold any degrees in education. He has worked at Hillsdale College as an employee, where he promoted a K-12 program known as the 1776 Curriculum that is favored by far-right wing activists. Historians have criticized the curriculum for lack of accuracy, depth, and context on important historical points, including slavery and the Civil War. Vermillion and Hillside are completely intertwined, such that Vermillion equals Hillsdale and vice versa. You may have heard about the social studies standards recently adopted by the Florida Department of Education that include inaccurate and racist lessons on the benefits of slavery. Slaves develop skills which in some instances could be applied for their personal benefit. That's the same ideology of Vermillion-Hillsdale, as well as the 1776 Project PAC that has endorsed the Five for PV slate of school board candidates, which this campaign has said they are proud of. Vermillion also has strong ties with Moms for Liberty. In March, Bridget Ziegler, co-founder of Moms for Liberty and board director in the Sarasota County School District, proposed that her district should hire Vermillion. The board voted three to two against that, because as one board member who voted against the proposal said, Vermillion has no track record. Vermillion has also come to Pennsylvania, first to Pen Ridge School District in Bucks County. On April 24th, the Pen Ridge School District Curriculum Committee Chair and Moms for Liberty member, Jordan Blomgren, added a proposal to the April 26th board meeting agenda to hire on voting Vermillion to consult on curriculum. Last-minute proposals without any kind of review is a growing tactic of conservative boards to hide their agenda and try to push through extreme policies. It's exactly what PV School Board President Jason Saylor has done here in these meetings, to try to jam through book banning and a bathroom policy with a vote before any details were worked out for implementation by teachers and administrators. I see my time's almost up, but this shall be continued. Thank you very much for listening.
Alicia Rosas?
Alicia Rosas from Quebec Township, and I got you, Kathy. When the proposal came out in Pen Ridge, only two days before the scheduled vote, with no process of review or conversation, the superintendent wrote to the board saying, "At this point, no one in the district has seen the contract to review the scope of services and costs." He cited the last-minute timing and the open-ended cost of $125 per hour with no cap, the vague scope, the secretive process, and losing trust of the teachers as reasons to hold off on considering the contract. Pen Ridge approved the Vermillion contract anyway by a vote of five to four, with all five votes coming from directors who are also members of Moms for Liberty. What is the impact in PV? We don't want what's happening at Pen Ridge to happen at PV. Unfortunately, the patterns of behavior by Jason Saylor and the Republican majority are clear. Mr. Saylor has been following the Moms for Liberty agenda step by step, introducing harmful policies to our school district. Most recently, Mr. Saylor copied and pasted the Pen Ridge bathroom policy as a suggestion for the PV policy. Mr. Saylor is clearly following everything they do. He may try to deny it, but we're not blind and we're not stupid. We've done the research, and we can see his actions regardless of what he says. Mr. Saylor is the Five for PV campaign chair, and if his candidates win in November, this community can expect that the first order of business on the very next agenda will be to hire Vermillion and fill our PV curriculum with extreme right-wing talking points and lies. We cannot afford to have our children educated in a right-wing echo chamber that will lead to them being unprepared for the real world. In the real world, diversity matters. In the real world, truth matters. We must keep the high educational standard that put PV School District in the top 7% of schools in PA and the U.S., according to 2023 U.S. News &amp; World Report rankings. Our kids and our community deserve exceptional public education, not basic, exceptional, that prepares our students for the best possible future in the real world while protecting our community, our property values, and our taxpayers. I, for one, am tired of Mr. Saylor, his Five for PV candidates, Moms for Liberty, and the 1776 Political Action Committee that is supporting the Five for PV candidates, dividing our community, wasting our time, wasting our tax dollars on right-wing culture wars instead of focusing on actual, important educational issues for our children and our community.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to make a comment?
Mine won't be long. Tracy Hen, Perkyomen Township. Last two meetings that I've attended, the first two meetings that I've attended, I mentioned the risk to girls. I want to apologize to the mother who pointed out last week, she has two boys, two girls, and she mentioned that with saying that girls are at risk, we're mentioning that boys are the culprits. That was not my intent, and this message is to her. While girls tend to be the victims of sexual assaults, boys are also victims. That is true. But along these lines, if boys knew they could enter girls' restrooms and girls knew they could enter boys' restrooms, both would do it. I've already spoken to a few parents who said if this went forward and we cross genders in bathrooms, there's curiosity there. They're young. They want to know what things look like. They look in books, maybe. They sneak Mom and Dad's magazines, maybe. I don't know. I don't know. But if they have a chance to see it, they're going to go look for it. They're going to take advantage of it. They're young and curious. If they're not allowed to enter, if they are allowed to enter, why wouldn't they? This is not from bad parenting wanting to see this. This is young human curiosity. So thank you for passing that policy.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi, I'm Jill Hall. I have two daughters, and they're seniors this year. I'm from Collegeville. I wasn't going to come up today, but I had an interesting conversation yesterday at a college visit. I bumped into a conservative family from Pen Ridge. They were part of our tour group, and I happened to say, gee, I hear you guys are having some stuff going on, you know? And she, as a conservative, said, yeah, it's absolutely insane. We are as frustrated as many of the liberals because we didn't want it pushed through. We wanted it to go through proper channels and be justified. Now, it's all up in the air, and all they've managed to do is divide the community. I think that's something to think about. We also have to continue to... She also tells me that they have issues with teachers who are talking about retiring, kids, families that are moving out of the district. All of these things that are unintended consequences of trying to get your way. Maybe we need to think about what's best for the community instead of what makes us feel bigger and better. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Hello, Tim Jagger, Lower Frederick. Just like to bring up the point that everybody's talking about 1776 PAC and Moms for Liberty, but forgetting the incident that this whole started at this school, not because of 1776, not because of Moms for Liberty. It started because of an incident at this school, and we are here today because hundreds of students at this school walked out. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, we'll move on to reports and presentations. Last week, we had a student liaison report, president's report. Dr. Russell, you don't have anything to add with your superintendent's report?
I do not, thank you.
Do you have anything to add to the solicitor's report? We do have a special presentation, Mr. Moran.
Okay, good evening. It is with much excitement, as Mr. Saylor shared, that I introduce to our school community and school board members Dr. Kia Champagne-Lee as our recommending candidate for the supervisor of Equity and Student Services position. This evening, Kia and her husband and adorable young son have joined us for what we hope to be a great partnership as we move forward. Kia's passion, enthusiasm, and advocacy for all students were clearly evident throughout each stage of the interview process, so much so that she received unanimous recommendations by all stakeholders. Dr. Champagne-Lee's love of learning is exemplified by her extensive educational career. She earned her Bachelor of Science in Special Education from Westchester University and her Master's in Curriculum Instruction with an emphasis in instructional leadership from the Pennsylvania State University, as well as her doctorate in Educational Leadership from Immaculata University. In addition, Dr. Champagne-Lee is certified as a K-12 principal, supervisor of special education, ESL program specialist, middle-level math teacher, and middle-level English teacher. She also holds her letter of eligibility for superintendent. So to minimize that educational career, she has just done a great job, and we really look forward to potentially having her join our team. Dr. Champagne-Lee comes to PV with 21 years of experience serving public schools as an educator and leader. She began her educational career as a special education teacher for a total of six years with both Norristown area and Great Valley school districts. Dr. Champagne-Lee's administrative career began in 2011, when she transitioned to a leadership role in the Norristown area school district, where she served as an assistant principal for three years. Dr. Champagne-Lee continued her leadership path with the Phoenixville area school district, where she has served the community as an elementary principal for the past 12 years. Nine of those years were working with elementary students in grades two through five, and for the past three years, she has shifted her leadership to serving all kindergarten and first-grade students as the district's early learning center. During her time at Phoenixville, Dr. Champagne-Lee has championed for the success of all students through her work surrounding equity, inclusion, and belonging. Some notable achievements in these areas include state-level recognition for the implementation of systematic and advanced behavioral supports, as well as the implementation of school-wide restorative practices. Dr. Champagne-Lee's experience as a learner, teacher, and leader have equipped her to serve our students and staff and community as we navigate the complexity of today's educational landscape. With that, we are excited for the opportunity to have Dr. Champagne-Lee join the PV community. So welcome, and we thank you for your service to the district.
Welcome. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Looking for a motion for the consent agenda as presented. Someone needs to say a move. We have one so moved. Is there a second? We have a second. Seeing any discussions? No discussions. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. We'll move on to education. Ms. White?
4.01 is from October 2nd, Education Committee of the Whole. There was no presentation last week. 4.02, 3, 4, oral on consent. 4.05 was an action taken for the approval of field trips. 4.06 is the approval of full-day kindergarten. I motion to approve full-day kindergarten beginning in the 24-25 school year.
Second. Any discussion? Discussion?
I just had a question. I don't know if you can answer this, if it's something that's been thought of. There have been some individuals that have indicated they're not in favor of sending their children to kindergarten full day, and I wonder if there's a possibility of opting out of that if a family's not interested, or is this something that would be required if you register for kindergarten in the district?
Dr. Smith is also sharing. At this point, we are not planning to offer a half-day option. We don't have that right now as part of what we're doing. It's full day.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor for the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
4.07 was the enrollment report. Have there been any changes? No, there are not. Thank you, Ms. White.
4.08 is the approval of the MCU Title I Services Contract. I motion to approve the Title I Services Contract.
Second. Discussions? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it.
4.09 is a motion to approve after-school programs as presented. An aye so move.
Second. Any discussions? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
That ends my section.
Thank you very much. Business, Mrs. Mares?
Thank you. 5.01, Mr. Weaver presented a Committee of the Whole report. Mr. Weaver, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. 5.02 through 5.12 are all on consent, and 5.13 is reports and grants and donations. And that ends my section.
Thank you very much. Payment of bills, Mr. Dorr.
Thank you. 6.01, it's a motion for ratification of bills and payroll and authorization of payments. Request to ratify the payment of bills and payroll as per the list submitted for the period ending September 30th, 2023, and authorize the payment of bills on the check and voucher registry submitted in October. An aye so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
6.02 is request to approve the treasures report and financial statements, including summary of cash and investment accounts as prepared by administration for the period ending September 30th, 2023, and aye so move.
Second. Any discussions? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
That's my section.
Thank you very much. Professional personnel, Dr. Campley.
7.01, all the way through 7.10, we're all on consent, so that ends my section.
Thank you very much. Support personnel, Mr. Keenan.
8.01 through 8.05, we're all on consent. That ends my section.
Thank you very much. Governance, Dr. Kohler.
9.01 was a first reading on policies, and if there's no discussion, we can move those to a second reading. 9.02, 3, 4 are on consent. 9.05 and 06, action was taken last week. And 9.07 is a motion to approve revised Policy 720.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Discussion? Dr. Campley?
So considering that we're a week in and we're already having to make changes to this policy, I do think, again, that this is something that should have been in policy and should probably go back to policy until the nuts and bolts are all worked out. I'm also concerned with the addition of putting in specifications for who can use the restroom that doesn't align with their sex, really draws attention to the fact that we're making allowances for some, but yet it's pretty obvious that then transgender students are not allowed to have allowances. So I think if anything, this policy is spotlighting the fact that transgender students are being further marginalized. So I really do feel that there should be no approval moving forward for this evening, and honestly, it should just go completely back to policy where we can talk and hash out and find a way to meet in the middle.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. I'll ask for a roll call. Oh, I apologize. I didn't see you.
So, Dr. Campley, I had some of the same thoughts that you had. However, I do think the revised policy is better than the original policy. So my thought was approve the changes that administration is asking for, but still continue to work through this in policy committee, if that's possible, because I do think this is something that has a lot of nuances, and the revisions address some of them, but I think there's many other things that still need to be worked through.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. Call for vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
No.
The ayes have it. That ends your section. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none. Any comments from any board members? Dr. Campley?
This past weekend, it was a very difficult weekend for a lot of families, seeing what's happening in Israel. And I want to just kind of make a comment to the community, anyone who's struggling, who has family members. This is already a challenging time for kids when they, you know, not too long ago, and I mean, it's still occurring, but Ukraine was, you know, everything first started in the Ukraine, and it's still continuing, and now students are hearing that there's war in Israel. And kids, whether or not they have family members or know of people in Israel, just hearing that there's war occurring in two different areas now is scary. And I implore you that if you're having trouble at home with how to speak with your children, we have excellent counselors and psychologists here. Reach out to somebody at your school and ask them for support. They can point you in the direction of resources to help your kids navigate these scary times. My thoughts and prayers to anyone who is being directly impacted.
Dr. Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. I just want to echo some of Mr. Moran's sentiments, and again, welcome, Dr. Champagne-Lee. We're very excited to have her as part of our team. I thank you for her approval tonight. We're really looking forward to doing some good things for students in the areas of equity, inclusion, and belonging. So thank you, and congratulations to her.
Any other board members? Seeing none. 10.03 is the notice of video disclaimer. There was an executive session held today for the purpose of legal, and I will rule adjournment.